All right, this is Dan Hills. I'm with Frontline Advisors and I'm going to explain just for one second of what Frontline Advisors is. Mr. Gooden, I hope you understand. Frontline Advisors, we represent police unions and corrections units around the tri-state area. So I'm going to talk about a couple of great attorneys real quick and then we're going to talk about the attorney sitting across from me and that's Mr. Steve Gooden. So Frontline Advisors, I work with Mr. Zach Gottesman and Mr. Rob Stokhar. There couldn't be any finer people to represent you or your union when you are in law enforcement. Now that took care of my house cleaning. Now on to talking to Mr. Steve Gooden who is a former city Cincinnati councilperson and will be again as he has embarked on another election. So the obvious question is the easiest. Tell us about yourself, your history, Cincinnati, and why you want to do this?
Well, again, Dan, thanks for having me on here and thank you for your years of service to the city of Cincinnati, both as a police officer and for your role at the FOP. I mean, you are an excellent spokesperson and advocate for the rank and file officers in a way that just those folks are never going to forget. And I also give a shout out to Mr. Gottesman who I've worked with and seen in courtrooms for over two decades. I mean, he's a lawyer's lawyer and he knows how to work the system, both in the federal courts and the state courts. And you're lucky to have him involved here. And thank you. The way this is set up, I thought you were going to read me my rights there for a second. I was wondering what I had done. So you know, if you need me to sign a Miranda form or a waiver or whatever, you can do that. You can search my car. There's nothing in it. I mean, you know, it's fine.
You want me to get to the part where I'm slapping my hand and telling us?
Exactly. Go right ahead.
You're obviously not telling us the whole story.
Exactly. You should hold something back at all times to make a good interview is what I was always told. But no, my background, I'll be very quick. You know, I've been a lawyer for 26 years. Graduated from law school in 1999. Before that, I worked up in the Ohio House of Representatives as an aide. Did some time in the Army, both as reservist and on active duty.
Thank you for your service.
As a JAG lawyer. My service, look, man, I got some paper cuts. I never saw combat. I was an Army lawyer. I did a couple of really interesting cases, but everyone says, "Thank you for your service." I'm like, "Save that for the guys who actually got shot at." Okay? I did once get a really nasty paper cut trying to process some court martial paperwork. So I mean, I loved it. It was one of the great honors of my life to wear the uniform, but I was not a combat lawyer. But yes, and then I started out my career actually in the courthouse as a law clerk to the recently, fairly recently deceased Norman A. Nadle, who is a good friend of mine. Then went over and worked in the prosecutor's office first for Joe Dieters, then Mike Allen, then Joe Dieters again. Spent about five and a half years there, worked all the way through the office and spent several years in the felony division, you know, working on murder cases and doing things like that. Tried a ton of criminal cases. Worked with pretty much every police department in the area. Ran the grand jury for a little bit along, for about six months I was in the grand jury. Wasn't at the head of it, but I did most of the presentations for about six months to a year. Just loved that job. And when I was in the military, I was a JAG, I was a prosecutor and also then got loaned out, was a federal prosecutor, was a Sausa for about six, seven months doing government contracting like fraud and abuse criminal cases. So I've touched pretty much every agency from the FBI to CID to the Sheriff's Department to CPD. So I've got a real love to it. And my second cousin, Carl Gooden, was the chief of police in Cincinnati in the eighties and into the early nineties. And Cole had his ups today. He passed away about two and a half years ago. So you know, we've been a lot of law enforcement in my family. So it's always been near and dear to me. And the way, one of the reasons that I'm running for city council again is just, I don't, is just this simple fact. You cannot have a civil society without law enforcement. You just cannot do it. You cannot just walk around in a hope and a prayer and hope that everyone's going to be nice to each other and hope they're going to respect each other's property and respect each other's person, not hurt people, not commit sexual offenses or prey upon the weak and steal from them or hurt them and kill them. That's unfortunately just part of the human experience. No country has ever been able to survive without like a real robust, fair, honest and just law enforcement mechanism in place. And I just think what we have done in the city of Cincinnati over the last four or five years has been this chasing this progressive pipe dream that we've seen on the west coast and in some other cities and trying to bring that to Cincinnati where we've like basically told our police officers, they can't really enforce the law. We've understaffed it. We've underfunded that department to a point where now the whole city is seeing the effects of it. I can't tell you any neighborhood that hasn't been affected by it in some way, shape or form. And now it is broken out and this lawlessness has broken out downtown where our business community has invested literally billions of dollars, including just one, 3CDC alone is $2.5 billion worth of development in downtown and over the Rhine. And they're all horrified about what's going on there and the uptick in violence and lawlessness and what that's going to mean to that investment. And that's not even to mention the small businesses down there, who, people who have their life savings, you know, in their small restaurants and their barber shops and their beauty salons, like cook sporting goods. I just talked to them the other day. They're horrified about what's going to happen to their businesses because of this perception of lawlessness. And it's not just a perception, it exists. So that's what's motivating me is to try to, there's some other issues in play, but the main thing is our city has become a national and maybe even international joke right now because of the viral videos, the shootings on Fountain Square. I mean, I'm putting the Bengals aside for the moment. Okay? Just this sense that my God, like, you know, what is happening in Cincinnati? We have both, you know, our sister cities of Columbus and Cleveland, both have seen reductions in homicides over the past two to three years. They also have seen improvements in police staffing. But here we are, we're going the opposite direction almost every metric. I'm a numbers person. I can get into it to a level of detail that might be mind numbing.
Yes.
But we are just going the wrong direction in every way, shape and form. And we need some policymakers to push against the administration to do the right thing.
So Steve, which you told me already, I want to jump right out and call you the law and order candidate. Are you comfortable with me calling you that, the law and order candidate?
I've been called a hell of a lot worse today.
Just today?
No, no, we are the law and order candidate. I mean, look, I consider myself to be a law and order person. And you know, that term has over the years been kind of used and maligned and kind of demeaned as being, you know, kind of like a code word for you're being racist or what have you. That is not at all what's in my heart about these things. A lot of the crimes that we're seeing are black on black crimes. You know, it's ripping neighborhoods apart, both, you know, particularly the gun violence we're seeing that we've seen in, these are neighborhoods like the West End and East Westwood particularly and Avondale. I mean, we're seeing horrific things happen there. So if that's law and order, I'm fine to be called law and order.
Well, then that's good because that's, you know, obviously when, you know, Frontline is wanting to talk to you, even though I don't reside in the city of Cincinnati and I don't work there anymore, I still care a whole lot about the city. I worked there for almost 35 years. And I'm sitting there and I'm watching more long distance, the same stuff that you're just talking about. And it's breaking my heart. And so anything we can do to help you, to help any law and order candidates and that you write out or upfront that that's who you are is really refreshing to me along with your background, which, you know, I knew most of it going in, but as you went through it, you know, I'm sitting here taking some notes because, you know, I'm going to be talking about this interview on social media and everything else and really excited about it. I'm going to do a little bit of, a little bit of, what do you think when I say a name and where else but to start on top? What do you think when I say Aftav Purval? What do you got to say when I say that name?
Well, I'm trying not to curse. Okay? We'll start with that. Aftav Purval is, I think, the most consequential political figure we have had in the last 15 years in a bad way. Okay? So I think he has his fingerprints both on the courthouse and on City Hall in a way that I think it's going to take years to fix. When he was a clerk of courts, he was very active politically there, driving a group of judges who do not believe in cash bail and who have created a revolving door, particularly with the bonds they set. And his fingerprints are all over that and that we cannot talk about what's going on at City Hall or what's going on with policing without talking about that revolving door at the courthouse. And I just know from my friends who are still actively policing, you know, rank and file police officers, you know, they, one of the biggest morale issues they have is the idea that you can go make a felony arrest and see the guy out in the next day, even an arrest with a gun. I mean, when I was in the prosecutor's office, it was just understood, even if it was your first time at the rodeo, if you got caught with a gun, you were going to sit for a couple of weeks until the grand jury took a look at your case and everyone could sort it out. The fact that that's happening, that people are walking out of that courthouse, Aftav had a role in that back in the day. But secondarily, I mean, here's a guy who ran in 2021. I still have the mailers at home, sort of on this, on this kind of capitalizing on the George Floyd situation, you know, basically running, saying, you know, "I'm going to stop racial profiling in the city of Cincinnati" when the police collaborative had outlawed it 20 some years ago.
He was making the cops the enemy.
Yes. He made the police the enemy. On the, I still have the mailer where you have the young guy in his car and the police lights are behind him and Aftav is going to stop that. He's going to keep you from getting pulled over unjustly. And what that did to police morale is terrible. The people he's hired to be around him, what that's done's been terrible. And he has supervised and stood by, now this started before him in fairness, but there's been what I call a slow rolling police staffing crisis that has gotten considerably worse during his time. I mean, we have a compliment, I believe it's 1,000...
In 59. Yes, 1,059. And that compliment was set how many years ago?
2005. Okay? And let's talk about that. That's the part that drives me insane. So wow, we're within 150 of that. It's not so bad. But back in 2005, first we had, under the, according to the census, most recent census, we had 7,000 fewer permanent residents then. Now, we know it's a lot more than that because we probably have at least 10 to 15 undocumented people on top of that. So let's see, we got an extra 20,000 people that live here full time. Back in 2005, there was no Brady Center, there was no TQL Stadium. Over the Rhine had not developed the way it has. So there are nights, and Ken Cobra told me this, and they estimate that there are 450 to 500,000 people in the city, like on a Friday night or a Bengals game.
Yeah.
So we have policing levels that were based on a 295,000 population in 2005. We're not even meeting that. And we have sometimes a third or more of that in terms of both new residents and people from the suburban areas coming in for our attractions that we didn't have in 2005. We need at least 300 to 350 more police officers to even be thinking about policing the city in a meaningful way right now. And like, so that compliment number's artificially low. Aftav has his head in the sand. He does not want to have those kinds of conversations. I mean, even people like, you know, a lot of the business type people, they're all afraid. They don't want to cross them. They don't want to have, but in private, when they're talking to people like me, these are the things that they talk about, like, you know, that even the compliment that we have, that should just be a starting point. And we have to be real about where we really are. The city has grown immensely in those intervening 20 years. We do not have any, I mean, it will take us years to get there, but we need to look at an extraordinary buildup in our police force if we're going to have any kind of meaningful, real, much less get back to the kind of like, you know, community beat policing that the collaborative supposedly calls for. We just don't have the manpower to do it.
No, not at all. That's not a secret anymore, but something we need city government to really focus on without a doubt. So I'm going to agree with you, but then I'm going to take a little off ramp from what you talked about. I had other names I wanted to throw at you.
Throw out all the names you want. Okay.
Before I throw out the other names, you talked about the judges. And the judges to me mean so much to what's going on. There's no bond, low bond, terrible sentences, all these things is what's going on. So here's my question to you. Don't mean to throw a hard ball at you, but what can you do when you're in city council about these county judges?
Well, I'll tell you the biggest thing you can do legally, nothing. I mean, you don't have any jurisdiction over what the judges do. But what you can do is use the bully pulpit of city council to embarrass the living hell out of them. And I will tell you this is that one of the, one of the reasons that, and this is both good and bad. A former city council member told me about this years and years ago. He's like, "There's no other job like city council in this area" because it draws so much media attention and media scrutiny. And I don't know why this is. When I was on council before, it is crazy. Like they have reporters down there every day and you have a microphone. You know, you have a bully pulpit, as they used to say.
Yes.
And that's something that really can be used and should be used to call attention to all this. Because you cannot talk about police staffing by itself or the police morale issues by themselves without talking about this stuff with the judges. And I think we need to, on law public or law and safety, that was the committee I used to serve on, or law and public safety, we need to be using that as a platform to call it in. And if I could and if they would respond, I would subpoena some of the judges in to testify about their, about, we know the judges. We know which ones are setting the bad box.
Sure we do.
We know, we actually had Judge Shanahan who actually went to Columbus, now she owns the Supreme Court, Megan Shanahan, and actually hid to enshrine in the Ohio Constitution the idea that you have to consider public safety as a factor in bonds. I mean, just to prevent some no cash. And now they're trying to be creative and even get around that. Because it's ideology and not looking at the actual, you know, facts of the cases. If you look at the facts of the cases, there are certain people that need to at least be temporarily taken out of society because they're hurting people and they're carrying guns or they're carrying guns to sell as a part of their drug activity or other violent activity. And there's just no way around the fact that if you're going to have a safe community, those people need to be locked up, even if they haven't been convicted yet. You have enough evidence that they are causing harm, that they need to be taken out of the community for a period of time for the good of the community. And that, I don't, for the life of me, I will never understand, you know, why that is controversial. I know this whole kind of theory that's been brewing in law schools for 20, 25 years. It was kind of starting when I was in law school in the late 90s, you know, that the idea that these laws are somehow inherently unfair or racist and what have you. And that, you know, and cash bond itself, just the concept of it is unfair and inequitable in some way. But the flip side is when people are getting hurt by these same people when they get out 24 hours later, I mean, that's even worse. And you know, I think, was it George Orwell has that famous saying that, you know, mercy upon the guilty and the violent, you know, is actually cruelty to the innocent. And there's a point where that's true. So I would love to have those hearings. I'd love to call those people down there. And you know, it's very interesting to me that Chief DeGee, one of the biggest things that has come out in her, this weird drama that's going on with her right now is, you know, she said, "I went to the mayor and begged him to go address this issue with the judges." Now, the mayor says, "No, I did not do, she didn't tell me that." But I believe her on that because anybody who has spoken to a rank and file police officer, particularly in the central business district or district one, will tell you that that's their greatest frustration is that they go out and make the arrest and the person's right back on the street, you know, with another gun within a hundred days.
That's been a big morale problem for years and probably even decades as I look back at my police career is the revolving door of the Justice Center. And we were using that term, I think, all the way back into the 80s, but I had no idea what was coming. You know, I had no idea how bad it could be because we would lock people up and they would actually spend the night, you know, they might, and they might, if there was a gun involved, like you said, they're going to be cooling their heels there for at least some weeks. But it just doesn't seem to be the case anymore. And I like your answer. It was honest that, you know, there's not a whole lot you can do legally or nothing you can do legally, but being out there and just being that spokesperson for the term I used already, law and order, but also the term of common sense. You know, where is common sense when you're letting, when you're letting bad guys walk back out the door? And this is an interview for you to speak, but one thing I wanted to say is, I saw the people getting hurt. And that's the insanity of saying that this is all about race because I saw the people that were getting hurt all the time and the vast majority of the time.
They don't look like you.
They don't look like you. That's right. And so we're turning people back out onto the streets to hurt more black people in what turns out to be the case most of the time. So they're wanting to do this for some reason that they feel is making things better when it's making stuff way worse. And somebody needs to be in those judges' faces 24/7 about it, out there publicly about it.
What I would say is this, even though that we don't have any kind of legal jurisdiction, council doesn't have legal jurisdiction. In my view, it's a political problem that needs a political solution. This is a political ideology that is driving these no bond decisions. So we need to bring politics to bear and the public to bear and educate people about it even more. And I think it's an issue, like you said, it, this is one, this year, I feel like it has broken through and it's starting to like cross, across party lines and get into the realm of common sense.
We hope so.
I hope so. Well, we're going to find out here in about 11 days.
Yeah.
But that is my sense. I mean, I, you know, we, you know, we're campaigning on this race. You know, we have, we joke about the Price Hill to Bond Hill strategy. We're going everywhere. But you know, in years past, I'd always tell these consultants and tell you, "Oh, you gotta modify your message when you're over in Bond Hill." But your price will say this. We say exactly the same thing everywhere we go. And that is, and we're getting a good response from it because it's honest and it's true and it's what people are like.
People want to hear the truth. I mean, they really do. They want to hear the truth.
Absolutely do. And if they don't like it, that's fine. I mean, that's fine. We've got other people. We'll go, we'll go talk to someone else. But we're giving the same speech everywhere we go, which is, which is, the city's on the wrong direction. It's more violent than it was four years ago. The roads are torn up. It's more divided. I mean, it's a tougher place to live in than it was four years ago. And I don't care if you're in Hyde Park, if you're in Bond Hill, if you're in Price Hill, if you're in Westwood, if you're in East Westwood, you're in West End, everybody feels like it's a tougher place to live. And it's a large part because it's not policed the way it should be. Not officers' fault. It's a resources issue. It's a morale issue. It's a vision issue. You know, it's just terrible.
Is it as tough as driving down Sunset Avenue? Is it that tough?
I drove down Sunset Avenue yesterday morning and I'll tell you, it is like those old videos that they have of the lunar moon landing. You know, from 1969, you're bouncing, you know, like Neil Armstrong or whatever's bouncing along. That is a disgrace.
Yeah. I mean, people on the east side and, you know, people outside the city might not know, but I grew up and lived west side for a long, long time. And Sunset Avenue is something that, like, there should be like a 60 minute segment about Sunset Avenue. It's just incredible.
Well, one of the things that we're going to do if we do get elected, we started to do before, we're going to do a pothole of the week where we go out and do, you know, like measurements of the pothole and, you know, and try to describe it like, you know, and, you know, we just want to call attention to it. And I mean, that's another thing where it's like the city has money. They just yesterday announced, or sorry, well, Friday announced, $850,000 being given to Children's Hospital of taxpayer dollars to do a, to help on what is a food insecurity project where they're trying to encourage urban gardening and food baskets as a way to try to reduce gun violence. The theory is people are hungry and that's why they're shooting each other. We're going to give you some sandwiches and some fruit baskets. But the people we talked to were like, "Wait, you have 850 grand for that." First, that would be about, give or take, four police officers with benefits, or you could at least maybe pave some of the roads that are a mess. But no, we got money for these kinds of goofy, we're going to give some sandwiches out and see what happens. You know, it's insane. And they are saying, but actually there are sandwich boxes like they're talking about there in this program. It's, there's like about 15 million a year in crap like that that they do.
Oh yeah. No, they invent stuff to get money.
It is insane. They funnel it through these nonprofits is what they do. And it's like, you know, the old, you know, the old charter movement in 1920s outlawed patronage in City Hall. That's why we have a civil service. But now we have this like new patronage where they funnel it all through nonprofits, like the United Way and blah, blah, blah. So anyway.
You ready for name number two?
Throw them out. I'm sorry. I got stuck on that name. You threw out a bad name.
Well, I had to start all the way at the top and I'm not going to go too far below that. And that's Cheryl Long.
Look, Cheryl Long is a lovely person. I've met her and known her for years. She is, she is politically captive to the mayor. And this is where I'm going to put my little, like, you know, I'm running as a charter right this year. I've always been endorsed by the charter party or committee. And a key part of the way the city's supposed to work is that city manager is supposed to have some independence. Like you should in theory have a city manager, a mayor and a council who are all adversarial in a certain way and pushing against each other. And right now you've got a 9-0 Democratic city council, a very progressive mayor and his handpicked city manager who's never been a city manager of a city anywhere near this size before.
What is the village of North College Hill?
North College Hill. Right, right. About 5,000, fewer than 5,000 residents. And then suddenly she steps up into this big spotlight. She didn't really have the professional background to do it. A very nice person and that's part of the problem. You can't really be a nice person in some of these roles. You got to be tough sometimes. And I have never seen even a hint of any kind of public disagreement between her and the mayor and the council. And that's not the way it's supposed to work. In a better system, she should be going to the, going to council and going to the mayor and saying, "Look, the police chief reports to me, we have a staffing crisis." You know, "The public works people report to me, our roads are a mess. You need to put more money into that rather than into these, you know, BS programs." You know, she's not performing that kind of role. I mean, I could get into the technical failures of her administration. They are, there are many of those. But the fundamental thing is just like, from an attitude standpoint, she's, she's not independent. And she knows that, I mean, that, you know, the mayor could snap his fingers, should be fired because he controls the council. And that's not the way it's supposed to work. So the word I would guess would use to describe her is compromised. You know, she just doesn't, she will never know what kind of city manager she could have been because she's politically compromised.
Well, we're just going through two names already. You know, I'm tempted to use a name that is, or a word that the Democrats like to use a lot and that's diversity, right? But one thing I always say out loud is that there never seems to be any diversity of thought.
Yes.
And that's, so that's what you've already telling me is that, you know, she, if we go back to Ms. Long, she doesn't provide any diversity of thought. She just, she's compromised. She's compromised, as you said. And then she thinks in a straight line with the mayor. So.
I think she thinks what she's told to think. I mean, I'm just being honest. I don't mean, I don't mean any disrespect to her. I have known her and met her and worked with her over the years. She's a wonderful person, you know, a good family, everything, everything like that. But like, you, these are tough times. These are tough jobs. And I mean, she has a law enforcement function as the city manager. I don't, it seems never to have occurred to any of these people, whether it be the city manager or the mayor, that they have a police force to run. And that is their primary obligation under Ohio law for a municipality is public safety, police, fire and infrastructure. Those seem to also be the three things in which they're the least interested and the least well versed.
Well, then we'll get to the, oh, I can't, I can't decide which name I want to go next.
I don't care. I guarantee whoever it is is already pissed off at me. So just keep going. The mayor actually issued a statement the other day saying, "I am uniquely unqualified to be on city council." And I used to do the city's bond rating agency stuff when I was in part, when I worked for the city as an attorney years ago. So.
So you're uniquely, you're uniquely qualified except for in your oppositions.
Well, I just have a different, I just have a different opinion.
Do you have diversity of thought?
Yes. I, yes. So I proudly accept his non endorsement.
All right. I was going to go right to the chief to stay. But I've changed my mind, Steve. I changed my mind. I want to throw the name Iris Foley at you first.
Well, you know, it's another funny thing. So I've known Iris, you know, for, since I was on council. And, you know, and the knee jerk thing is to say is like, well, Iris is terrible. I think Iris has evolved over the course of her career into a place that isn't good. Okay? There are things that Iris did back in the day that I thought were very wrong. There are things that she did back in the day that were toward the end as the collaborative came together, where she was a voice for calm. But what she's doing now with this special contract, she has a special contract with the mayor where she's apparently supposed to be some sort of advisor on the collaborative agreement. But based upon the timesheets of hers that we have seen through public records requests, it's really not clear what she's doing day to day. She is outside all the civil service rules as an independent contractor. She's supposed to kind of report to the city manager, but clearly reports to the mayor in practice. We've seen that over and over in public. What she is really being paid to do, hundreds of thousands of dollars a year paid to do, is to provide political cover to the mayor. And we've seen it over and over and over again. And that is a divisive thing. It is a terrible thing. She is very active in social media and other media out there just, you know, spewing the mayor's positions and frankly, spewing some very hateful stuff. And again, I'm biased because I have been the recipient of some of this hate. You know, she and Damon Lynch, her pastor, have said some horrible things about me personally. You know, I'm tough enough to, I duly noted. I also accept her non endorsement very proudly. But I also think that she singularly, short of the issues that we have with staffing, is probably the second biggest issue with the police morale that I hear at the rank and file. I mean, we, you know, we have, you know, there's video evidence and I'm sure you've talked about it probably previously on your podcast. I mean, we, you know, we have, you know, there's video evidence and I'm sure you've talked about it probably previously on your podcast of her interfering with arrests, of her videotaping police officers doing their jobs. And if you just, and the way I've tried to explain this to some of the other council members and people that I've talked to is, if you in your job had somebody who, who's walking around videotaping you with their phone and you know that person can immediately call your boss, in this case, the mayor, and say, officer so and so was, was making an arrest and I, who have no law enforcement training, feel that it was inappropriate. Well, that's a terrible thing and it's a morale killer. And those, and I know that the videos of her interfering with the, even some minor arrests have been seen tens upon tens of thousands of times on social media and passed around. They are, they have gotten national attention. The idea that you have an employee who is apparently reporting to the mayor, walking around downtown and over the Rhine, recording police officers doing their jobs, harassing them, interfering in arrests and doing it all on the taxpayer dime is just beyond the pale. So, I mean, I, I, there is no redeeming the situation with her. I know there are people out there in the community who, who really remember an Iris from 20 years ago, who is, and have a lot of respect for her and remember that. This, what she's doing now is just really tearing at the very fabric of the city. It is undermining law enforcement. It is a, it is a thorn in the side of the taxpayers. And I, and she just has to go.
Well, you know, one thing I've always said, it seems to me that City Hall believes, you can tell me what you think of my theory. And just like you, I'm a big boy. I can, I can, if you disagree. I think that they believe that she has a riot button, that she can push a riot button when she's not pleased. And by a riot button, I mean, she can cause civil unrest if she's not getting what she wants. I personally, I don't think she has that strength.
I don't think she has that.
I don't think she has that power, authority, but I think they think so. Well, that's what I, I think of Iris.
I think, I, you know what? I think you're absolutely right. And I think either she or, who, I don't know who did this, but someone has sold Aftab, who frankly, just doesn't know the city the way you and I do.
Yes, sir. No doubt.
He doesn't know the city the way, he hadn't spent the same amount of time here. He's not from here. He just doesn't know the city. He, he knows the city from kind of an academic standpoint. He doesn't know the city.
Walking down the sidewalk in Hyde Park doesn't amount to being on the streets of Cincinnati.
That is correct. Hyde Park is not, yes, it's not representative. It's not representative of Cincinnati. I believe he has bought the bullshit that she can, that she has these powers to either create problems or stop problems.
Yes.
And I'm just telling you from my friends, particularly in the African American church community, that is her influence is not, I mean, maybe she had that kind of influence 20 years ago. She did not have that influence now. And we continue, you know, I continue to campaign in the black church community particularly because a lot of those folks are very frustrated with where their neighborhoods are. They're frustrated about public safety. They have the same concerns as any, many white Cincinnatian has. And I'm going there and getting a great reception, even with Iris getting on social media every day and telling everyone what a terrible person.
Making cops the bad guy isn't working anymore. It's not working anymore.
No, it's not. Yeah, it's not.
People are done with the cops are the bad guy thing.
That's right.
And, and now we hope we see that same result in the election by, by electing a pro law enforcement candidate.
That was a trendy thing that lasted about three years. It's over.
Yes. We'll, we'll put it to rest because it should be over.
That's right.
Before I say the, the last name on my list, I'm going to say the name of a, a little operation inside of the city. The Citizens Complaint Authority, the CCA. Yeah. Can you hear it away? Can you hear my tone of voice when I'm talking about the CCA?
You know, the CCA has turned into something in my view that it was never meant to be. You know, it's, and I watch a fair amount of them and look at, there was a point in time where particularly coming out of, you know, and I was, I was running around as a young prosecutor in 2001. I mean, I started in that office in 1999. And I thought the CCA frankly was insane when, when it was part of the collaborative. And then I kind of came around to a point of like, all right, you know what? There are people who don't understand, you know, police behavior. And there was a period of time where I was like, okay, you know what? It's relatively a benign thing. Like, you know, there are, there are complaints about officer courtesy. You know, if you see most of what goes through there now are not some sort of civil rights violation. It's officer courtesy. And I think there was a period of time where it was being run in a way where it was, you know, where it actually added to some transparency. But now we're in this area or era where everybody's got a body cam. Okay, like the idea of trying to like, you know, like there's a record of what happens at all times. And the last, the current iteration of the CCA is, is basically just a bunch of political grandstanding from what I can tell. And it's not good. It's not productive. And, you know, in, in the old days, remember when we started this, you were trying to recreate these police interactions. Now they're all on video and it's like, you know, and just like, you know, what are we doing here? So if they're gonna keep having something like that, it needs to be kind of revisited and retooled for this kind of era that we're in. I'm also a little concerned about this new guy that they brought in. They brought in a longtime public defender to run it, some guy, I'm blanking on his name, but who has no real, you know, law enforcement experience, if anything, has got experience on the other side, you know, pushing back against officers. So we'll see whether he's gonna be an honest broker or not. But, you know, I've got real concerns about where that is. And I mean, there's a lot of talk about the collaborative as a whole, whether it needs to be quote, refreshed again, retooled, revisited. I think it's a given going into, particularly if we have enough folks on council, that the collaborative is gonna have to be reopened in some way. And the CCA is gonna be a big part of that. I mean, a lot of big cities have something like the CCA now. I can't see a scenario politically where it just totally gets wiped out. But what's happening there now isn't productive. It's just a bunch of nonsense.
Modified some.
Yeah. I'm just being realistic. I mean, I mean, in my view personally, it's not necessary anymore because it's, again, like we're, we have body cams now. If there's a real, if there's a legit complaint, call up the footage and see what actually happened. But the bulk of these, it seems to me now, are people grandstanding over courtesy type issues and not over some sort of real rights violation.
And you have a department, and I was trying to find the right word for it before. You have a department that I believe works hardest at justifying their existence. And, you know, I spent a lot of time there because I would represent police officers there when I was the, the president. And, you know, I tell you probably 90% of the things there were just, they're, they're, they didn't need to happen. And I always said about the collaborative, and I know, again, it's a political reality that we face. The collaborative came down to two things to me. It was about transparency.
Right.
And messaging. And, 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 you know, us, us being better spokespersons, being better listeners, being all those things, better communicators. So we had to be more transparent as the police and we had to communicate better as a police. And I accept that. I accept that we, we had to be more transparent than I, you know, the police department I came on in 1987. We had to be a much better communicators. And I think we've done that. And, and, you know, the, the collaborative has this big, long description of what it does and everything. And I'm like, I could put it on two pages. Be more transparent and be, be better communicators. I mean, that's, that's essentially what it was. And of course, the CCA hangs its hat on that. But.
Well, they always say, if I'm, and we cut you off.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, but I mean, it's like, you know, like, there was a period of time where I think the collaborative had a role. I really did. I, I didn't at first. I was like ridiculously anti collaborative. And there was a period of time there, probably 2005, 2015, where I was like, wow, okay. Like the collaborative is actually improving community police relations. It's not perfect. It's not always good. There were officers who were getting a hard time at the CCA that didn't deserve. But like where we are now, just things are very, very, very different. It's not 2001 anymore. Okay, it's not 1987 anymore. You know, it has to change with the times. And we have, by any standard, you know, really a kind of a progressive police department. Like everyone always jokes about Cincinnati being behind the times. There's that old Mark Twain joke.
I know.
But Cincinnati, really, we were ahead of all. That's one of the reasons why the, you know, the George Floyd riot, you know, riots that we had in 2020 were such a puzzlement to me. Like, do you understand that our police department actually is extraordinarily transparent with the collaborative? I mean, we haven't had a, a controversial custodial killing in a long time. I mean, we just don't. I mean, because our officers are very well trained. You know, we engage in deescalation, our chase policy, if anything errors, I think to the wrong side of actually chasing people. I mean, we, you know, we, we're, you know, we're bending over backwards to engage with people.
No doubt about it. I saw the change over, you know, my decades in law enforcement. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, I was just, the question is whether or not it's time to go back to federal court and tell, I mean, politically, I doubt they just totally do away with it. I mean, there are people.
Yes.
There are people, there are Democrats who talk to me, liberal Democrats, who have told me that like, we think the collaborative should be dissolved, but they don't have, nobody's got the political courage to go there. I'm just, I'm just saying realistically, it's gonna have to, it will probably, it will exist in some fashion.
Sure.
But, but the CCA is a particular thorn in officer's sides and I get it.
It's a morale buster again. That's the.
Yeah, that any, any guy can come in and say, he was mean to me. And like I said, most of it is like this courtesy stuff, you know, I, you know, that I've seen in a way. And that would be a morale killer too. You got Iris out there who can walk around and interrupt your arrest if she happens to see it. And then you got the CCA where they're gonna sit there and parse your body cam footage and see whether you used a bad word.
Yes, yeah. The interviews down CCA were insulting often. And the interviewers were, were very unrealistic with police officers. They had no idea what it's like to actually be out there on the scene, but, but.
No, I'm with you. I'm with you. It's like having civilians like totally look at that with no experience. There ought to be a, it's amazing to me that there's no requirement that an officer sits on the panel. Let's just start with that.
Or a retired officer.
Yeah, somebody who's actually done it.
Yes, that would be, that would be helpful, that at least get some introduction there. So as I'm talking to the law, law and order candidate, and I'm going through these names. Where else should it end but to ask, to say the name, Chief Terry Thiggy. And then I guess that brings in all these other names. You know, it brings in, it brings in the mayor and the manager and this crazy situation that they're in now. And, you know, how did they get there? What did they do to get out of this? What, you know, what do you think there? Councilman, hopefully good.
Well, I could tell you where it's gonna end, which is a big taxpayer check. I mean, I, we've, I've seen, we've seen this movie before.
Yes, sir.
And it always ends in the same, same way. Look, I, I'm in the minority here and I know I've, I've had some people who are annoyed when you were saying this is, I think, I, I was very critical and openly critical of the job she did as chief. She's suspended now. I guess she's still technically the chief, you know, I guess we have an acting chief.
Yes.
But it's pretty clear and they're doing this investigation after the fact to try to justify firing her. And I'll circle back and put my lawyer hat on for you on this. The, what the, what the city solicitor's office has done contractually with her is, is mind boggling to me. It's bizarre. We're in a weird legal, the city is in a weird legal place. The taxpayers are in a weird legal place with all that. But I, I really felt at the end of the day that she had a little bit of the same issue that Iris has, which is she became a political actor more than a chief. And that's where she lost me, particularly in the last six, seven months, where some of us were out there saying that like, we don't trust these, these crimes. They're out there saying crime is down overall, you know? And, and it's pretty clear that the way some of the data was being collected wasn't really capturing the kinds of offenses the way they were occurring. The example I always use was one of my friends who actually lives in the West End. There was a straight up gun battle outside of his house. I went over there on Sunday, Saturday morning and, and saw that there were over 50 shells on the ground. Car window shot out, house window shot out. Amazingly, nobody, you know, injured. But those just show up as property crimes. Okay, it's like, you know, like a, like a guy throwing a rock through your, kid throwing a rock through your window is very different than a straight up gun battle happening. And so we knew going in that like some of these, the way the data is now collected, I don't think it was always this way, kind of seemed to be minimizing some of these incidents. And that a lot of reports weren't being taken. And I know from back when, when she and I still were interacting a bit, you know, that, you know, that they were very sensitive on traffic interdiction particularly. Worried about how the numbers would, would appear in terms of the races of people pulled over. So they, you know, there, there was this sort of political correctness that had kind of seeped into her, her thinking. And I just think it was pretty clear that, you know, she, she seemed to be there to provide political cover for council and the city manager and the mayor rather than push back. Now she's saying, now that she's suspended, no, I was pushing back all along and just didn't see it. And maybe some of that did go on, particularly in regards to the judges. She claimed she was pushing back about that and not getting.
But she wasn't doing it publicly.
No, that's the thing that I think was, and I think she contributed to the morale issue that way too. Because you see the top, you know, the top, the top cop in the city, clearly playing political games and clearly trying to ingratiate herself with her, with her bosses. And that's just a bad, that's, that's, that's a morale killer at all times. I just know when I was in the army, whenever you'd see the political, you know, lieutenant colonel or the politically, you know, career minded general, you know, you just knew you were gonna get screwed, you know, in some way. Like those people aren't gonna have their back. They're gonna have their, someone else's back. And I think that was the sense there. I never, you know, we never once heard her say anything publicly about staffing. We never once heard her ask for additional resources, or at least I didn't. I never once heard her just say like, hey, maybe we need to go back and see how we're collecting this data. Because, you know, we were hearing over and over from different neighborhoods that shootings are up, that crime is up. We're seeing ShotSpot are on track for 23,000 shots a year. But then they're like, no, but crime overall is down. You know, like it doesn't, you know, it's that old car, you know, was it Groucho Marx thing? Who are you gonna believe, me or your lying eyes?
Your lying eyes.
Yeah, you know, our lying eyes.
Somebody made a song out of that too.
Exactly. Sure did. The Eagles.
Yes, that's right. Eagles.
Eagles. But it's like the, you know, like, like I live in the Clifton Gaslight District. We had an episode over the Fourth of July weekend that was, I mean, just beyond the pale. I mean, I don't know if you're familiar with that. We had this hookah bar that was doing after hours parties.
Yeah.
And ended up with 30 cars deployed, mace, pepper balls, an officer injured, a fire truck blocked. It was like 60 idiots out in the street having a party at three in the morning and they wouldn't move for a fire truck.
I'm lucky. I went home at two. I was only, I was only there until two.
Yes, there were, you know, and it was so funny, you know, like this is only in the Clifton Gaslight. You know, they have this old Shakespeare statue, statue by the graders there. And one of the old, the ladies was, you know, we're having a meeting with the business association and I'm involved in all that stuff up there. And it's like, yeah, it was terrible. Like an officer got hurt and, you know, we have video of everything. Cause there's cameras, officers hurt and there were, you know, 15 arrests or 13 arrests and all this stuff. And she's like, we have this video, this woman twerking on the Shakespeare statue. Look, that was the one thing that disturbed me the most. And I was like, if you ever read your Shakespeare, he might've been all for that, like actually, you know? But, but I mean, it was like, you know, but it was just a lawless scene. Here you are, like, it was three blocks from the mayor's house. I mean, you got like million dollar houses down the street, you know what I mean? Like, and we're having those kinds of, kinds of just outbreaks of violence and lawlessness in neighborhoods like Clifton. So it's not just, you know, it's concentrated in some of the neighborhoods where the city keeps dumping so-called affordable housing over and over. We know that. They made a choice to concentrate poverty. That's another whole. It could be like a two hour podcast about the choices they've made to go over and over again to Price Hill and the West End particularly. You know, with halfway houses and affordable housing.
It changed, it changed by west side forever. It really did.
It was a choice they made. It was a policy choice.
I understand.
But the, but, but now you've got like scenarios where, you know, you're having, you know, grass, you know, car break-ins in Mount Lookout. You know, like, you know, like.
Ranches, yeah.
Yeah. And then, you know, these situations like in Clifton. And then it finally culminated in Clifton with this photo that was all over the media for a while. They had a guy running around with an AK-47 in front of the graders, like at night, you know, like the, like family friendly Clifton Gaslight District. There's a guy out there at two in the morning with a, you know, automatic weapon waving it around. It was captured on one of the cameras. So it's a, you know, we, that was the moment, I think, that, that a neighborhood like Clifton, which is as progressive as it can, lefty as it gets, a bunch of like college professors and.
But it gets put on notice.
Yeah, they're like, wait a minute, things have changed, you know, so.
Yeah. And when somebody's in between you and your double dip of chocolate chip, you know, then you start to.
You get anxious. But I will say, but, but this is the kind of stuff where this is happening there and the chief is still saying, nah, but crime overall is down. Don't worry about it. And saying that people like me, who are trying to talk about this, that we're fear mongers. Like, look, there's a, you know, fear mongery is, is trying to point out stuff that isn't happening and trying to make people panic. We're like, no, these are things that are happening that you're not responding to adequately. They're, they're two very, very different things. And that's where she lost me. So I'm like, my kind of view of her is a little colder maybe than a lot of folks, certainly than some of the folks in the FOP, which is if you're gonna live a political life, you know, you may end up dying a political death. And that's what happened. She became politically expedient. You know, I read it was politically expedient to move away from her for the mayor. And, you know, but, but she was running around providing political cover for at least the last two years of her, of her time there. And, you know, but, but she was running around providing political cover for at least the last two years of her, of her time there. And that's just what happens. It's sad. The way they're treating her is, is even worse. Like I said the other day, I'm like, AFTAB, I will give him this, he has done the impossible. Okay. He has taken the, you know, he has actually made police morale worse, when I didn't think it could be made worse. If you want to, like it was already.
I should be laughing.
Well, nobody, well, it is funny. It's like, you know, it was in the toilet already. I'm like, how could you make it worse? Take the unpopular chief.
Hold my beer.
Make her a martyr.
Hold my beer.
Exactly. Like, let's just do that. It is truly amazing what he has done.
Well, just so you know, I, I am more in line with you than probably some of the other people you're dealing with from, from my union. I have, I always had mixed feelings about Terry Thigie. If, if you don't remember this little fun fact, I had gone public and was in support of Lisa Davis, which brought a little bit of ire from her, but also Cheryl went on a, a, a kind of a last minute trip to the districts and everything, looking for support for officers or, or wanting to ask them who they wanted, right? And because I came out publicly and said, every cop that's contacted me has said they want Lisa Davis, who's now the chief of police of Austin, Texas, by the way.
Yes, yes.
But everyone, and I'm, I'm not saying dozens and dozens called me. I think most people just knew things were in motion and they had nothing that they could do about it. But I probably had close to a dozen call me and say, is there anything you can do to get Lisa Davis in, in there? And so when Cheryl went on that last second little trip and I had a source, I will not reveal down City Hall, who told me that she had already picked Thigie and I got, I got on air and said that, that did not make Ms. Long very happy at all. But, but that's the way it is. But like you.
I remember all that.
Do you remember? It's, but like you, even though I wasn't a fan of, of Terry Thigie, even though I didn't support her becoming the chief, I also don't appreciate they, the way they've treated her in this. This, this is truly wrong. And like you said, now they, now they're making her into a martyr. It's very, very interesting. It's a, it's a, it's a kind of weird historical moment here for, for Cincinnati. But in the end, none of it is, is going to be good. None of it's going to help morale. None of it's going to help the, the huge job that the police have in front of them, which is old fashioned lingo here. They got to clean up the streets.
Right.
They absolutely have to clean up the streets and, and you talk about the hookah, not only was I not at that hookah bar. I was, I was getting, I don't even really know what the hell a hookah bar is.
I had to get educated on that myself. Well, you know, the hookah bars are an issue right now in the city because they are.
Is it hookah or hunka? How do you say?
I think it's hookah.
Hookah, hookah bar.
I don't know. I've never been in one either, but they're, they're very popular among young people. They sell these very concentrated tobacco products. It's like super vaping and you, it's like, almost like a bong, but it's not weed. It's tobacco. And you sit there and, and, and do this and you get this kind of rush, tobacco rush. But they don't have a liquor license. Most of them don't.
They have a hookah license.
No, you have to have a special smoking license. You do, okay, a tobacco license. But the reason they become hotspots is because they don't have a liquor license. You don't really, they can't really be shut down at two in the morning like a bar.
Ah, I see.
So they're saying, they take the position, well, we'll have this after hours party and then people, it'll be BYOB. We'll charge a cover. We'll have dancers and DJs and whatever. So when the bar is closed, you can come to the hookah lounge.
And twerking on Shakespeare.
And twerk, and twerk on Shakespeare. Yes. Which again, to which he did not object. So, you know, so there, so there, I mean, but there, that's been an issue. And actually these after hours parties, actually this mess on Fourth Street that, that got all the attention during the Jazz Fest, you know, wasn't after hours party on Fourth Street. You know, it was three in the morning. There was, there was a place that was just like, well, we're closed. Or are we? And I'm told the, the recent murder there down at, on Third Street on the.
They shot up the guy to BMW or something.
Yeah, yeah, that, that came, that was a result, that came out of a dispute in an after hours party. These after hours parties are, are really turning into a real issue. And the hookah bars are a big, you know, hotspot for those because they're like, well, you can't shut us down. Now, the city apparently has just passed an ordinance to try to regulate the hookah bars, but they were in this kind of gray zone where they weren't really being regulated. So.
That sounds like it's right up council's alley, which is where we hope to see you.
We, it took me two and a half years to get a council member to actually seriously look at the hookah bar thing. I went back through my emails the other day. We started talking to this Mark Jeffries guy in, in August of 2023. And they just announced, they just finally introduced something after the officer got hurt.
Um, to, to go right into the election, just a couple of things you want to mention. You don't have to vote for nine people, do you?
I prefer you not. You end up diluting your vote under our system.
Thank you.
But you, you can vote up to nine, you know.
But you can vote as few as, so tell me, who else would you want besides the people voting for Steve Gooden? Is there other people that you'd like?
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good folks this year. You know, so I'm, I'm part of the whole, you know, charter committee. I was the chair of the charter committee for years and, you know, previously I'd been endorsed by the Republican Party and the charter committee. This year we just decided, we thought this was a charter year and I really believe in the charter movement. You know, it started in 1924.
It's focused on local things.
It's focused only on local stuff. We don't take any positions on national issues at all. And it just felt like that kind of year. Because, you know, basically, you know, the way the mayor, you know, like the mayor, one of the things that I most despise about the way AFTAB conducts themselves and the way this council conducts themselves is, you know, the way they demonize anyone who they disagree with. So if you're a, you know, if you question any of these development deals they do, you're a NIMBY and hate all housing and hate affordable housing. If you call for more policing, you're a MAGA fascist. That's all the money. They've spent over a hundred thousand dollars on mailers calling us all MAGA fascists.
No kidding.
You know, oh no, I've been getting, somehow they don't know enough to take my name off the list. I get them to my house. My daughter brings it to me. It's like, Dad, are you a fascist? I'm like, I, I mean, maybe, I don't know. I don't think so. You know, and like, if you question the horrible way they're handling the homeless stuff in the city and the homeless issue is, is a homeless population issue. And almost every, including in my neighborhood up in the Clifton Gaslight, huge issue.
You're cruel to homeless people.
You're cruel. You lack compassion. So they, they, instead of just saying like, how do, how can we settle, solve these issues? What are you saying? They demonize anyone who actually says, wait a minute, we might need to do this differently.
And their favorite word racist, right?
Exactly. No, and yes, you start at racist and then work up to fascist and Nazi and so forth. You're like, and, and it's just, it's despicable the way they, they, they do this.
I've seen it.
So, and so that's one of the reasons we thought was this, this is a charter year. The old charter party, I mean, it's Democrats and Republicans that, that used to, and we haven't, you know, really ran a slate of candidates in some years. It's the old Tarbell party, you know, and you guys, you know, Pete Strauss and people, you know, Liz Keating was someone that we had endorsed in the past. So, you know, we thought this would be a year to actually kind of have a local focus. So, you know, I'm a big fan of Don Drehouse, you know, who, you know, was a, was a Democrat, a lifetime West Sider. Lived in West Price Hill for 40 years and he's just had it with the mayor.
Did he go to Elder?
He did go to Elder.
All right then.
I was at the Elder Bowl. I was at the, the game with them on Friday night. Yes. No, he's a, he's an elder guy. But, but he is somebody who has broken, you know, he's still a registered Democrat, but he has broken with the party over the way they've concentrated.
He's broke off the woke stuff.
Yes, he, yes, he's broke off. Yes, he's not woke. He's broken with the woke stuff and he knows that we need to fix the policing. The one that, that surprises people when I talk about her is that I've become a huge fan of Lakeeta Cole, who, when she was on council before was not, I don't think an anti-police person, but she's somebody who has been through some incredible things in her life and has come to a very common sense place. And I think is going to be a real advocate for police officers going forward. I mean, she's somebody who's going on a journey that's not, not maybe exactly parallel in a way to Chris Smithers over the years, but she's somebody who is, who looks at the, she calls herself an independent first and Democrat second. And she's somebody that I think will really surprise people if she gets back on. And I think, and, and a lot of folks are kind of like, really? You know, when, you know, and I'm like, no, no, give her a serious look and listen to what she has to say. She is a mother. She's a business owner. She's been through some, some pretty tough stuff in her life and has come back. She also is vice president of the Bond Hill Community Council and has been a very big advocate over there to try to keep, you know, to try to address some of the housing issues. I mean, that's another neighborhood where the city just keeps concentrating poverty.
Yes, yeah.
And she's somebody who has been sort of, you know, looks at these things in a way that, that, you know, she's also like me in her 50s. And she sees, sees the world in a different way than probably she did when she was in her 30s. So she's somebody I think it's, it's pretty fascinating. And I'm a Smithersman person. I mean, I've known Christopher Jesus for 30 years.
Yeah.
And it will be a real, I, I got to work with him when he was on council and he's somebody that also has been on a, talk about a personal journey that he's been on for many, many years. But there's somebody that just really cares about the city and cares about people and doesn't, just doesn't want to see people get hurt and understands law enforcement in a way that is, you know, that he just gets the human element of it all.
He still reaches out to me. He's, he's, he's a really good guy.
And I hope he, and I hope he has a shot. It'd be great to, great to work with him again.
It would be. Well, I think it's time we wrap this up. Want to give you one last, last chance to say something that's on your mind that I haven't asked you about, that you'd like to say.
I think the Bengals should let Zach Taylor go today, but I don't think they're going to do it.
I paid to be there. I, I don't know why, but I paid to be there and I, I, I thought, was there 32 teams in the NFL? 31 of them would fire Zach Taylor tomorrow morning, but the 32nd one won't.
Well, they will not. And I'll tell you, I just, my God, yeah, I don't even know what, I mean, you know, it's clock management.
Yeah.
Sorry. I don't, they say the county owns that stadium. The city has very little control. But if I were on city council, I'd write a letter to the Brown family tomorrow. I can promise you that.
And, and, and maybe even some ordinance or something.
You're going to pass a resolution, a non-binding resolution to fire Zach Taylor.
Yeah, yes, sir.
See if we could get nine votes on that. But thank you very much for the opportunity to talk. It's an honor and a privilege to see you. You take care.
A pleasure to have you here, really. And I wish you luck. Say one more time, how many days you got?
11.
11 days. Cincinnati, get out and vote for Steve Gooden. Get out there and, and, and bring law and order back. Bring common sense back. Bring, bring, I'm going to say diversity of thought, what I brought up earlier. Bring some diversity of thought back. It's, it's, it's good for the city. We, we, like I said, I, I don't live in the city anymore. I don't even live in Hamilton County anymore. But I still consider it home. I guess I was at the, at the Bengals game today. And, and let's face it, all the other communities around here, they all do better or worse depending on how well Cincinnati does. So thank you very much for putting your hat in the ring and doing what you're doing, Steve.
It's, it's my honor. Thank you.